Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order our September 5th meeting of the Marietta City Council. Roll call. Would Madam City Clerk please do our roll call to determination of our quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protem Stone.
Here.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Marietta Public Artwork Policy Workshop. Staff, hello. May we have your report, please?
Absolutely. I'm so glad to be here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Dominique Tamario, the city's Public Information Officer, and it's really an honor to be here today to discuss the idea of a public arts policy for the city of Marietta. So, as you know, this is a workshop, so we won't be taking any formal action today. But we would like to share some background on the topic and also provide an update on a recent opportunity related to a public arts policy for the city, and then share some possible next steps. Our goal is to hear from council, to hear from any community members, and to see if pursuing a public arts policy is something that staff should explore further. So, to start, I wanted to discuss the concept of public art and defining what public art is. What is public art? If you search online for a definition of public art and you went to your first five links, you would find five different definitions. But, that being said, something that was inherent in nearly every single definition I found is that public art is art created for general public consumption. And, you know, these artists, this is a quote from them, "It's art created to be seen in a public space." One element that also was consistently noted in what differentiates public art from private art is that there is some sort of public process for selecting the art, where it's installed, and what would be installed in the public spaces. And that process is often laid out in some sort of public art policy. So, the presence of public art has been an increasingly popular strategy for communities to improve their quality of life, be it, you know, as place-making, a community-building feature, or an economic development strategy. And as such, you'll notice some images throughout the presentation. They are images of public art. And under each photo, I've noted the city in which that public art piece is located. Each piece was committed through their municipal process for public art. So, to sort of, you know, lay, that laid the foundation sort of of what public art is. But now, I'd love to dive into some backgrounds on public art and the city of Marietta. The city of Marietta's General Plan 2035 Implementation Plan, it does include a call to consider the adoption of a public art ordinance. It goes into some details about offering incentives to businesses to provide public art, possibly a fee for commercial industrial projects that do not wish to install public art. And this item is under the jurisdiction of the city manager and is categorized as a long-term action. So, over the years, you know, there has been interest from various community groups to install public art pieces in Marietta. Yet, without a formal public art policy in place, the city has limited ability to either prevent or support these projects. So, that may lead you to asking yourself, why now? Why are we here right now for this workshop? And we're bringing this workshop before you because, in the winter and spring of 2023, a group of three Masters of Public Administration, often called MPA, students from the University of Southern California Soul Price School of Public Policy, they worked with city of Marietta staff to explore options for a city of Marietta municipal arts policy. So, these types of projects often are a requirement to graduate from an MPA program. And they came to the city and asked if we had a project that, you know, could really benefit from a strong research base. And we said, "We do," actually. And so, these MPA students, they worked in conjunction with and at the direction of city staff to perform interviews of community stakeholders, to gather data regarding public art policy best practices in other jurisdictions. And they provided analysis related to possible next steps if the city of Marietta pursued a municipal arts policy. Essentially, this project allowed for a robust amount of research to be done on a possible public arts policy, but at a fraction of the staff time it would have taken otherwise if we had completed the work on our own. So, you can see in the image that is the cover page of the arts policy that they created. I really want to thank the staff who were involved in this. Of course, the heavy, heavy lift was on the three students at the guidance of their professor in the MPA program. But multiple staff members were a part of the input as well as community stakeholders. They are on the screen. And they were really gracious with their time, with the resources and background that they provided the Capstone team. And also, they all participated in like 30-minute to one-hour interviews to really download a lot of background and insight into how a public arts policy would impact kind of their specialty field. So, a really big thank you to everyone who's on the screen and all the staff at the city who were a part of that. So, with input from these stakeholders as well as a comprehensive review of scholarly reports on best practices in municipal public arts policies, they crafted the 115-page report that is included as an attachment to the staff report for tonight's, or this afternoon's workshop. I do want to note that they included the review of over 40 existing municipal art policies to identify which policy components might be sort of serving as a best practice or, you know, something that we could possibly implement or consider implementing. By no means would we say that this is the type of thing where it's like a cookie cutter. You can take one policy and then implement it here. But it, it does provide a general framework if pursuing a public arts policy is desired. The Capstone team had a lot to share. They did provide a presentation to our staff at the conclusion of their project. And the main kind of takeaway that they provided, and again, this is from the team, so this is not necessarily reflective of, you know, direct, you know, what we would say as staff. But I did want to provide the six major report findings, and those are on the screen. You guys can read through those and probably have now. But, you know, one of the, the big things is that, you know, we went through this very extensively as staff. And with that, we considered some possible next steps. So, like I mentioned at the beginning, we're not looking to take formal action or finalize any sort of policy here this afternoon. It's just a workshop. But we wanted to kind of lay out some possible next steps if a public art policy is something that we, you would like staff to explore. So, these are listed, these next steps for consideration are listed in the staff report. But with the MPA's findings and input from city staff, we thought that possible next steps could be to establish a working group to develop a draft public art policy for the city of Marietta, and to consider initiating a pilot program for art in public spaces within the downtown-specific plan, innovation zone, and city-owned parks and public spaces. A draft of the pilot program would, of course, be brought back to council, city council, prior to initiating any pilot projects. I did want to briefly share why those locations were selected as, you know, possible considerations for the pilot program. So, the downtown-specific plan that was adopted by city council in 2017 does make note of public art and provides guidance about the citing and design of public art and our current Innovation District General Development Standards. Appreciate Mr. Sean Trongstew providing them to our team. It also does discuss public art standards for larger developments. And so, we thought, you know, those are actually elements that had been previously noted, but we've been in a little bit of a, we don't really have policy to guide on how we would implement those. So, we thought that they would be ideal locations for a pilot program. And then, of course, city-owned spaces, they would be more in our control, which is us, the parks and city-owned properties. So, with that, I just wanted to leave you with this quote that was pulled from a research article on art and culture in communities. But, you know, the main point of the workshop, as I mentioned, is that we're excited to hear input and really use this time as an opportunity to see if devoting staff time to a well-thought-out and collaborative policy is something we should pursue. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you so much for your report and information. First and foremost, I'd like to thank USC School of Public Policy, Tucker, Kelly, and Keshawn. How do I say her name? I don't want to mess it up.
I got it right here.
Kenesha?
Kenesha, yes.
Kenesha, okay. And Kenesha, for all their hard work and dedication to this project. I know, as a graduate student, your time is definitely not money because this took a long time for them to do that. So, thank you to all of them and to everyone from our city that was also in guidance of getting this to move forward. And I'm super excited to hear questions from my fellow council members because I think art in our community would be enhancing the environment. So, any council members, let's go to, see if we're on our... Oh, well, Councilwoman Warren is first in my queue. I love this. It's working.
This is only because I found the button first.
Nice.
No other reason. I, did they get an A on the project? Just curious.
Do you know what's funny? I wanted to ask them that, but I didn't want to make them feel bad. But I will say that I did, oh, and I should share this. I did notify the students. I shared the report and also with their professor. And they were greatly appreciative because they don't always get to see kind of all the work that they do come to fruition. So, they were all very, very grateful. And I vote for an A, for sure.
I appreciate their hard work. And I know that that, and everybody's input is so important. But I do have one question. You know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. So, how do we, as a city, define what art is and whether it's appropriate or not? Who makes that final decision?
So, thank you for that question, Councilmember Warren. As I noted at the beginning, it's very subjective. So, one thing that I wanted to start off with is that we are very aware that there are many, many layers to this process. And so, tonight, while, so I can provide a little bit of guidance on that. But, you know, tonight, or this afternoon, I should say, we're really looking to just see if it's something that you would want to consider because the working group, that would be one of their main tasks. When you do look at the report, you can see that one of the most consistent policies or, I should say, elements in successful public art policies and ordinances is the, the creation of some sort of commission or committee. And so, to speak to your question, that's where, who sits on that committee would be really essential because you are right. You don't, you likely don't want it to be just kind of, you know, one person making a decision or just the city or things like that. So, that is a very common practice. That was the number-one kind of practice that was seen in all of the reports that they found. So, but thank you for that question.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warren. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, a great report. The sample art that you showed was really nice. I especially liked the one with all the Greek letters, if you knew that was Greek there. That was, that was pretty cool because Greek is used in math. And I'm a math nerd, so I recognize a lot of those, a lot of those symbols. And so, my question was about the, the commission. We would have this, this arts commission be like planning commission or any other commission we would have, and they would be appointed by council and go through an interview process. Is that how that would work?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Holliday. So, again, I wouldn't want to make any statements that, you know, this is the way that we are certainly recommending. But in our discussions, there, there's a lot of best practices in terms of the makeup of those commissions. We actually have all of the arts policies that they refer to, again, the more than 40. And it's broken down. I can look at, you know, how they make them up. The one thing that seems to be a trend is that oftentimes, staff and maybe council are a part of it. The makeup is a little bit unique in these because there are unique factors that go into making those kind of decisions. But again, that is definitely something that the working group, our proposal at least, would be that the working group comes back and presents our best thought-out, you know, of what we would suggest the makeup be. And then, of course, council would have input on that.
And are there any other cities in southwest Riverside County that have an arts policy, public art policy?
I believe the city of Temecula does.
Okay.
Actually, I believe Lake Elsinore does as well.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We talked about that.
If I could jump in, Dominique. So, what the purpose is for this afternoon is really to find out, before we really dive into this study and put together a comprehensive program recommendation to bring to you, which would probably come at another workshop, is this something that you want us to do? Is this something you want? It will take staff time. It's a good program. I think we would benefit from it if you... I know Lake Elsinore has in their medians some public art. They're small additions, but eventually, they'll lead to bigger things. So, the first question, I think, that we would ask of you is, do you want to have this type of policy? And then, direction as to what would you, how would you like to see it brought back to you? Because we could bring you a comprehensive program and say, "Here's what we recommend." Or would you prefer to be part of that process and decide, "Do we want a subcommittee? Do we not want a subcommittee?" At that time, we'd need to decide what is that made up of? Who's on that subcommittee? So, lots of details that we would need to work through. We need to know first, is this something that all of you are on board with?
Thank you for that. Do you, do you want my answer now?
You certainly can give it.
I'll take it.
I think it's, I think it is something that we should pursue. Art in public places, as Dominique mentioned, can bring a community together, can be its identity. I would prefer to come back in a workshop format. I'd, I'd prefer to be involved in the process myself. That's my two cents.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday. Council, or Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dominique, a great presentation. And I lived in Oregon for a very short time. And my neighboring city called Grants Pass had bears, was their public art. And it, I loved it. I absolutely loved the theme of, of the holiday. They'd bring out the bears at the holiday time. But then, in the springtime, they would bring out other bears. And people actually flocked to Grants Pass to see the, this unique art. And then, in Meridian, Idaho, they had abstract art all throughout the community. And I loved it. And, oh, Flagstaff, they have mural art throughout their community. So, I definitely would support public art policy. I'll do whatever the council wants to do. If you want to do a subcommittee or a workshop or have staff do it, it doesn't matter to me. But I think it's something that I would love to see happen in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. Thank you, Dominique, for the presentation. I'm going to concur with the previous four, or three that had spoken. I think it's a great element to help Marietta continue to grow in the right direction and have input from all the stakeholders that want to be involved. And again, I think I'm supportive with whatever council would want to do and the next steps for pursuing what we can do. So, that's my input for that.
Thank you, member, Councilmember Lavelle.
Public, public comments, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just, yes, let's hear some public comments. And then, we'll bring it back up to the dice.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. First of all, would like to say, this is a privilege to be up here. It's encouraging to see this finally happening. The questions that have been asked have been on point. The amount of work that Dominique has put into this with the USC students, along with MAC, we were involved in that process. And to see it get to this level and to hear the encouragement coming from city council is, is wonderful. And with the help of the Marietta Arts Council, Jessica Large did a lot of research over the last, probably close to four years now, with other cities analyzing their arts in public places policies. We looked at Lucadia, Palm Springs, Palm Desert, Brea, the city of Orange, Carlsbad, Encinitas, San Diego, Lucadia, Oceanside, which has been an extreme inspiration to see what they've done in a very short period of time. Their mayor there is unbelievable, how involved. They've got a museum now. It's just incredible what they've done. And to see this, Councilwoman Stone brought up something very poignant. It is that we have the opportunity here to brand art in Marietta specifically, to brand it, and to have a consistency that runs through all of the artwork that we initiate and put into place here. We have that opportunity. We took a field trip with city staff several, actually, years ago now, where we looked at the city of Escondido. We've had the good fortune of putting together this preliminary art in public places policy, which I think you all have a copy of. I'm hoping you all have a copy of it. It's definitely worth reading, and it will put it on track where we need to go with art in public places policy. But we had the good fortune of having a city planner that worked for the city of Orange, the city of Escondido, Sparks, Nevada, and Mammoth, California. He put together an arts in public places policy in every one of those cities. And if you've driven through Sparks, Nevada, their branding of, of art there is wildlife. It's all over the freeway sidewalks, the bridges, the overpasses in front of public buildings. It's absolutely fascinating, beautiful. And you see the same in Mammoth, California, and you see the same in Escondido. So, we do understand that this is going to have an effect on, on city budget, IT funding. That's something that's got to be discussed. And in this body of work, there are several examples of other cities throughout Southern California that illustrates how those funding mechanisms are put together. It's not just fees on development. It's also...
And thanks for yours as well. Connie McConnell. I'm doing your job now. Sorry.
That, no, that's okay. Just real quick, we're having a technical issue, but he's just going to resolve it. Just give him a second. Thank you, Jayce.
Thank you. Good evening. And I want to reiterate what Casey said. Thank you for considering a, a art in public places policy. We really appreciate it. We have done a lot of work. And I really think, again, I'm going to point to this. It will save you time. It will save you energy. It'll save you staff time if you look into this because we really have been putting a lot of time and energy into this in the last couple of years. And I'm just very pleased that we're at this point of considering and hopefully following through with an art in public places policy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Your turn now.
My turn. Jessica, is it, how do you say your last name, ma'am?
Large. Hi, I'm Jessica. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to review this. And just wanted to mention, with Casey talking about the person who was city mayor of Mammoth, Sparks, all those different places, he's on our board, and he's been on our board for many years now. So, we're just really pleased to have him. He's a great, a great person to go with lots of experience. So, he helped us with that. And as Connie mentioned, having that already kind of compiled will reduce a lot of staff time. One thing I really wanted to mention, a great example of why we need this is, what year was the library built here? Like 2013, I want to say? There's a spot specific on the front of the library meant for a mural and even on the architecture plans. And I believe that hasn't happened because there has not been an art policy in place. So, it'd be really nice to get some color on it. That's all.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, any other comments?
That concludes public comments.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other discussion or, Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Gerardo had brought up the, the MAC Resource Roadmap booklet that I think we all have seen at one point and have. The, do we know if the students that did this Capstone project took a look at that and maybe vetted some of those ideas out?
Yes, it's my understanding that they did receive that from them and reviewed it in their analysis.
Okay, cool. Just want to make sure that happened.
We appreciate them sharing that.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Warren.
I too do believe that this is a very important project that we need to move forward with, and I 100% behind it. And there'll be, there'll be a lot of questions down the road, so we fine-tune a lot of things. I'm not sure what respect we bring this back. Do we ask you to bring it back as a policy? Or do we, you know, have another workshop to see? I don't know where we go from here, but I am 100% in favor of, of moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. So, what I'm hearing as a consensus, and just to sum this up, please, council, correct me if I'm going astray. But we are in 100% to move forward with this and to bring it back to the council as a workshop. And that we would like to be, my thought is that if you could put the backbones together for this policy, then we could fill in the gaps. Also, one of those things that I think is very important that we bring up is the funding aspect and that no money be used for Measure T or that we should only use money from our general fund. Also, I think our funding and budget for this needs to also be brought forward, as was in the brochure, and how other cities are funding that as well. And is that kind of consensus in a nutshell? All right. I, so if we have to move forward, do you have clarity or need any clarification on anything, Dominique?
I feel good about that. Kim has given a good nod, so I think we have great direction. I really appreciate everyone's input.
Well, thanks again to USC. Go Trojans. Sorry. But yes, thank you to their hard work and dedication and to our community's hard work and dedication to push this forward as well. And Dominique, many hours, I know, working towards this, as well as Kim. Thank you for all your help as well. So, how exciting to move something forward. And I do not believe that Marietta be the city of bears, but we may be the city of something else.
Beavers or coyotes.
Right. So, that concludes this workshop. And we will resume with a regular city council meeting at 6:00. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. We are now reconvening our September 5th meeting of the Marietta City Council from our workshop. Before we get started, I want to mention that 6:45, or a time soon thereafter, we will be holding a public hearing on the council district, on the city council district for the Marietta Hills Specific Plan. Madam City Clerk, would you please determine a quorum?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Here.
Mayor DeForest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, and I'd also like to note for the workshop that Councilmember Holliday arrived late. I apologize, at 4:37 PM.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk? All right, now moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation. I was wondering if Councilwoman Warren would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then our invocation will be led by Salvador Rangel from the Calvary Baptist Church.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart and stay with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we invite you to this meeting with our City Council meeting in Marietta. Lord, things that are going to be discussed today are important to not only the city's citizens, but business, Lord, and the things that they're going to discuss and have been talking over as members who represent the citizens of the city bless us with, Lord. Give them wisdom, Lord, and the decisions they make that's going to affect all the citizenry and businesses here in the city. Lord, also ask that you bless all our service members. We have quite a few military veterans and war veterans who reside within the city. Just bless them, Lord, and the ones who are currently serving, who are stand ready to give their lives for the freedoms that we've been blessed in this great country. And Lord, bless our first responders here working for the city who also give their lives, Lord, for our safety. Bless everything that goes on here tonight, Lord, and we give thanks in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rangel, for those beautiful words. We appreciate you coming here tonight. Thank you. God bless you. Moving on to presentations, I am very excited to invite our chief of police up for our retirement recognition today of Susan Wegman.
Before I read this resolution, I want to tell you it was my honor to be your lieutenant. I was your lieutenant for some time, and now your chief. And thank you to your husband. It's a pleasure meeting you, Greg, finally. I've heard about you, all good things, sir, and a veteran of our military and 15 years with our city, so thank you very much for that. And now you're going to get to hear all the wherethes, right? So let's see if I can do this without my readers. Whereas Susan Wegman has lived across California from the northern part of, from the northern part of California to San Diego, eventually settling down in Marietta in 2004. And whereas Susan Wegman first started her career with the Marietta Police Department as a volunteer, and in 2008 she became an employee as a police service technician in our records division and in our traffic bureau. Whereas Susan Wegman will retire as a police service technician too. And whereas Susan Wegman and her husband Greg Wegman have been married for 41 years. They have two children and three grandchildren, Tony, Jordan, and Micah. Great choice of names. Whereas Susan Wegman believes that due to great leadership, great choice of words again, she continued to grow, allowing her the capability to be an invaluable asset to the city of Marietta and the citizens of Marietta. And whereas after 15 years of public service, Susan Wegman will always be a part of the Marietta Police Department family. And whereas we congratulate Susan Wegman on her retirement and wish her the best of luck in all future endeavors such as following her passion for interior design. Now, therefore, be it resolved that our mayor Lisa DeForest, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Marietta, do hereby commend Susan Wegman for her service and dedication to the residents of Marietta dated this 5th day of September 2023. Congratulations.
And it is my honor to present you with 15 years of service to the beautiful city of Marietta, and we wouldn't be where we are without you. And if you know, that's 180 months, 783 weeks, 5,479 days, 131 and change hours, and 7 million minutes. So thank you for everything you've done for our city. Congratulations. All right, what a wonderful way to start our meeting. agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. I'd like to call for a motion and a second, seeing that we have Cindy Warren and Lori Stone and all those. Thank you, and everyone vote. I have to say, I absolutely love our new system. This is fantastic. Yeah, motion passes, 5-0. All right. Moving on to our city manager administrative update, Madam City Manager. I know we've got lots of great things coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor. We absolutely do. I'd like to start off by asking our fire chief, Bernie Malloy, to come up and talk to you a little bit about some things that took place last week.
All right, good evening, council. I'm excited this evening to present you with our plaque for reaccreditation as an agency for the next five years. As you know, Marietta Fire and Rescue was the first fire department in Riverside County to be an accredited agency. And what accreditation is, is we take our fire departments and we measure them against the highest standards internationally that a fire department can achieve, and we set ourselves through a process where we measure ourselves against those standards. And I'm happy to report tonight that for the next five years, we've met those standards and we have some recommendations for how to make our department even better. And so I'd like to dedicate this to our city council, who makes sure that we have all the tools necessary to deliver the services to our community and to our firefighters who are in the room that make sure we deliver that, those services to our community every single day. So thank you, everybody, for being able to be here with this plaque. I get to present it, but the work was done by a lot of people on our agency.
Thank you so much, chief, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, if we could have Brian Crawford come up, or he's going to give us a quick update on the pool.
Mayor DeForest, Mayor Protem Stone, members of the city council, my name is Brian Crawford, Senior Program Manager with Community Services, and I really appreciate the opportunity to provide you and the community with a brief update on our design and reconstruction project for the Calooc's Pool. We have begun the community outreach portion of our project by launching a project-specific webpage, which can be found, I'm sorry, website, which can be found at www.caloocspool.com. The website hosts a video introduction of the project and invites members of the community to complete a survey that is being used to solicit input from the public about what features and programming they would like to see at the new pool facility. The website will also be continuously updated throughout the life of the project to keep the public informed of our progress. It's important to point out that the survey will close on Monday, September 18th. We hope that the community takes the opportunity to participate. As of this morning, we have received 236 survey responses. To publicize the new website and survey, our project team has been working with our public administration, public information officer, Dominique Samario, on a coordinated media campaign using social media, monthly publications, and designing banners and posters that will be placed at our sports parks and city facilities. The picture you see on the slide is the design for our banner. The results of the survey will be used by our design team to guide the community design workshop that is scheduled for Thursday, October 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Alderwood Park Community Room, which is on Baxter Road, just east of Whitewood Road. All members of the public are welcome to attend. Our project team will also be hosting community outreach pop-up events this week at Marietta Market Night in the historic downtown area this Thursday, September 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and at Calooc Sports Park this Saturday, September 9th, from 8:00 to 11:00 AM. I've listed the other pop-up events for next week on the slide. We've also been working with the Riverside County Department of Environmental Health on our plan to suspend operations at the current pool facility and to drain the pool for public safety reasons. The pool will be completely drained by tomorrow. I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have at this time.
Thank you so much, and I'd just like to say thank you for the snippet of a report. We appreciate your work, and thank you, city manager, for that. I know a lot of our community members are reaching out, also encouraging all of our community to reach out and take the survey and tell us what you want, because we can't build the community that you want to live in if you don't tell us, so.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And finally, it has long been the council's goal, and I know all of you know this, to have City Hall open five days a week. And so thanks to the positions that we've been able to add over the last few years and the cooperation of all of our employees, beginning Monday, we will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00.
Woo-hoo! And that concludes my announcements. Well, you ended with a fantastic news for our community, so thank you for making sure that there's always someone to answer a question for our constituents. Thank you so very much. All right, moving on to governing body commissions and committee reports. Madam City Clerk?
This is the opportunity for city council members to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees under board meeting attendance. Report shall not exceed three minutes.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I attended the RTA Commission Meeting on behalf of our mayor, who was unable to attend. I have a few things to report. Fiscal year 2023 ridership is up 27% compared to last year in 2022. The RTA 25-set promotion came to an end, ridership promotion came to an end August 31st. However, they have replaced it with free Friday rides starting September 1st, and that goes through June 28th of 2024. Also, the RTA will be coordinating with Marietta Public Works to move bus stop locations during the widening project of Marietta Hot Springs Road, and will do an informal information campaign with signage and social media announcements informing the riders of the temporary locations during the construction. In addition, RTA is currently looking into improving our Marietta Hot Springs bus stops for safety and weather issues, considering extreme heat and rain, and at the higher ridership stops. So they'll, they have some funds, and they said they would be happy to look into improving our stops along Marietta Hot Springs Road after the widening is completed. I also attended the RCTC, I attended the Commission Budget and Implementation Committee, Implementation Committee last Monday, and there is no reportable action. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren, and thank you for attending the RTA for me so I could drop my son off at Purdue so he could go to school. So I appreciate you so much. Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. WR COG and RCA are, normally would have been, had their meeting yesterday, but because of Labor Day, it'll be the following Monday, so I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll look forward to that next time. Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Southwest Women Collaborative, and I want to thank our mayor, Dr. Lisa DeForest, and council member Lisa Sobek from the city of Menifee, who took the lead on collaborating as a region for higher education. And it's been a wonderful process to see the two of them bring all the stakeholders together in our region. It will now become a subcommittee, and lots of good things are going to come from that, so thank you so much. And the goal of the Southwest Women Collaborative as a region will be addressing traffic and water for the 2024 year cycle. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem, and I just thank Councilmember Warren for attending RTA, which I did not, so nothing to report today. All right, any public comments? Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oscar Fernandez? This is on non-agenda item? Seeing no more public comments.
Okay, well, maybe if he comes back in, maybe he just stepped out? Okay. If you could just let me know, Madam City Clerk? All right, moving on to the Consent Calendar, Approval Items 1 through 10. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered routine and may be enacted upon by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the Consent Calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from city council to pull any of the Consent Calendar items for discussion or abstaining from voting? Seeing none? Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a Consent Calendar item?
Seeing none.
I could call for a motion a second to approve the Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 10. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday and Warren. And please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public hearings. Can we go there yet? Nope, not yet. Moving on. We will wait on the Marietta Hills specific plan, so we'll move on to sale of city-owned real property located northwest of the intersection of Clinton Keith Road and McEllen Road. Staff, may we have your report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jarrett Ramaya, and I'll be presenting item number one, which is the sale of real property for the city of Marietta. The property that we're talking about tonight is located at the northwest corner of Clinton Keith Road and McElwain Road, as you can see on the slide above you. The area shown on the screen within the red lines is the city-owned property, which is comprised of two segments within the right-of-way along McElwain Road. So as you can see in the photo, I've delineated in red, it's actually two segments that are connected, if you will. The vacant parcel to the west is under construction with a project and is zone community commercial. Ashton Development, the developer, received approval from the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit and development plan permit, and took a condition of approval that they'd have to come back later and purchase this property, and I'll get into why. So the property that this right-of-way land is next to, on this screen I'm showing you the footprint of the daycare, the footprint of the car wash, and also the existing Sierra Lane. So although the project does have existing access to Sierra Lane, for circulation and secondary access requirements, they needed a second driveway. The only location is to punch through for a new driveway along McElwain Road. So as you can see by my arrows, I'm showing how future drivers could turn right into the area or could turn right out from. There's a median in the middle of McElwain Road, so you can't turn left out of the site. But I just want to show you the typical circulation, and that the project for secondary access and circulation requires another driveway. And so in order to do that, they have to punch through the city property, and rather than have someone drive on our property, we'd offer it for sale, and so that's why we're here tonight. It's from the original project that we worked on. When a local jurisdiction such as ours has property that may be sold, the Surplus Lands Act must be followed. This is state law. To initiate the sale, the city is to declare the land as surplus in that we don't really need it for another use. Given the small size of the property, there are exemptions under the Surplus Lands Act that I'll walk you through. that I'll walk you through. And so there's actually four different exemptions that state law allows for. In the pink, if you will, at the end, we found that the small size of the property and the location, we've, we, from our findings, it does qualify for exemption under SLA. And as you can see in the notation, it's really meant for the smallest of parcels, like former streets, things like that, and that's what we're dealing with, we're dealing with leftover right-of-way on McElwain Road. And just to underscore the criteria, it has to be less than 5,000 square feet in size, which it is. It's about over 3,000 square feet. The configuration size cannot support housing, and that's a newer law, to make sure that if housing could be put on that land, there's another process that we'd follow. But it's too small, it's simply too skinny and too long to accommodate any setbacks. That it's not contiguous to land designated as open space or existing low and moderate income locations. It would not be needed for future expansion of the adjacent road, today we're talking about McElwain Road, and that the property would be sold to an adjacent property owner, which Ashton Development, who's here tonight, the escrow would go to them. The city did work with the applicant, they paid for, and we evaluated, an appraisal done by Epic, the valuation of the property is $70,200. Even if a city can exempt a project, there is a 30-day letter that we send after tonight's hearing to Housing Community Development. They would have 30 days to let us know if they had a concern, and I have that letter prepared, but only after tonight's action will we send that on your path. And so we're asking City Council tonight to make a finding to support the use of the exemption under the SLA. Again, we feel that the size, location, and who it's going to, the current owner of the property, are findings that we have made in the attached resolution to the staff report. We always want to make sure if something's subject to environmental law, agreements like the one tonight is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, but it's good to note that for the record. And there's one recommendation I didn't add on to this, but we have three recommendations tonight. One is that City Council would not find this as a project under SEQA, that we would ask you to adopt the resolution declaring this as surplus land that's exempt from SLA. And the third item, forgive me, is to amend the fiscal year 2023/2024 operating budget to appropriate budget for the sale of land and escrow expenses. With that, if you have any questions, I'm available, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for the thorough report. Do I have any questions from Council? Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ramaya, thank you for the report. Do you have an estimate what the cost of escrow and closing fees would be?
I apologize, Councilmember, I don't have that, but the agreement is drafted so that 50% of that cost is paid by the applicant and the other 50 is taken by the city. So I apologize for not having that in America for you.
Okay, I'm just challenging to approve a budget amendment without an amount. Thank you.
If I could, it's usually just a few thousand dollars on a project this size. The property, it's based on the title report, it's like a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're providing the title, title report to the developer, correct?
The applicant has access to title report from the title company, they'll be providing that to us. Although we have one on record, that record was from the processing of the application, and so we always ask for that to be updated.
Yeah, and the seller typically pays for that title insurance policy that, so that the buyer is insured of free and clear title.
Correct.
And those in the escrow costs typically aren't too much on a $70,000 purchase, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other Councilmember, I'll move and open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimony regarding this item? Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. City Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. As Mr. Ramaya indicated, this project was approved last May, and we're, we're well underway on construction. We're excited about building this project. This, as he showed in the depiction, it is a very small, narrow piece. So we're grateful to have this piece behind us, hopefully. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you so much. All right, seeing no more public comments.
Correct.
Any discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion in a second.
5-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving back up, backing up a little bit, can we revisit non-agendized public comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Oscar Fernandez.
Oscar? Yeah, right, no, no, right here, sir, right here to the podium.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. The Marietta Senior Center was built for seniors, and the men's room has two toilets, yet we are only allowed the use of one. The other toilet is kept locked for staff. There is only one male, full-time staff person that I know of, and he's young and probably very seldom needs the facility. A lot of seniors are veterans, they were allowed to go to war, but cannot use the second toilet unless it is occupied, and then they have to go to the office and request some, someone to unlock the facility. I've got some pictures, can I show you those?
Certainly take them, yes.
I'm bringing them.
Thank you.
I forgot where I left. The second toilet is occupied, and then they have to go to the office and request someone to unlock the second toilet stall. As you can see in the pictures, some, sometimes there is no one in the office in that picture, and it's probably a matter of time before some poor individual has an accident. Can you imagine the embarrassment? I brought this to the attention of Leah Kolek, Parks Manager, and then to another occasion, I spoke to her face-to-face and have yet since, and I've texted her, but she would not return my texts. I thought this was very inconsiderate. I also texted Rosa Vegas, Senior Executive Assistant City Manager's Office, again, no reply, again, not very professional. Also, I'm usually at the senior center after 11:00, and I have yet to see they, when there was no urine in front of the both funerals, surprising me to me, because you, Marietta is a very beautiful and clean city. This all can be verified by just going to the center. Also, the women have one of their stalls locked. And someone in the men's rooms sometimes has an accident on the toilet, making it unusable. So I cannot understand why we are only allowed one toilet, and I, and one full-time employee can use either one he desires. That's all.
Thank you, Oscar. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other non-agendized?
Seeing none.
So seeing the time?
Yep.
All right. We're going to move back to item number 11, public hearing, Marietta Specific Plan, City Council Voting District. Staff?
Madam Mayor, I apologize, it's act, we're going to move on because it's not quite 6:45 yet, so Jarrett, Carl, I apologize.
Oh, sorry, I was 6:30 in my brain. I don't know, sorry. It must be, yes. All right. Moving on to, so, thank you, multifamily residential and mixed-use objective design standards.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief so we can get to.
No, no, you're.
45.
You're perfect, thank you.
You guys already know about this item, so sneak preview. Yeah, I'm Carl Steele here, City Planner with the Development Services Department, and with us tonight in the room as well as our lead consultant, Alan Loomis with Placeworks. And these are the city's multifamily residential and mixed-use residential objective design standards. So this was most of what's before you, was already adopted by your City Council in May. We've just made a few tweaks since then, and I'll talk about those in the presentation. So we'll do a little refresher on what these are, a little bit on the community input, since we did a little bit more since May, talk a little bit about what's in the final document. We have a new ministerial process I need to talk about as well, related to the housing element, and then we'll get to the recommendation. So the objective design standards, what are they? Essentially, this is an implementation measure from our housing element. It's funded by the state through a LEAP grant from State HCD. It fulfills a mandate that's in state law for us to have objective standards for multifamily projects. It sets up a simplified administrative ministerial review for certain projects that meet applicability requirements. It sets a minimum standard of quality, which I know the council, and we talked about that in May, we want to be sure we get good projects, that's important here. The objective standards are not a one-size-fits-all approach, we've got different architectural styles, there's different building types, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. And then, the, the real key thing here is this is implemented in our downtown specific plan, in our transit-oriented development areas, multifamily zones, and then, as council knows, also in our commercial and business and innovation areas as well, because of new changes in state law in the last year. So where do they apply? These are, these are all the areas. We looked at this map before in May. I guess the main thing for the layperson to understand is, we're going to see a lot of multifamily projects in the TOD overlay, which is outlined in red near sort of the central core of the city, and the downtown is outlined in blue. That's where we're seeing a majority of the projects right now, and then there are other multifamily zones in the city, but that's kind of the cores in that area. And then the other zones are really only related to certain projects that are allowed pursuant to state law. So a little bit more on community input. This was discussed a bit at the Planning Commission, so worth noting that we kind of did a little bit more, as you can see in the pictures there, and I know we had a couple Councilmembers out there, we appreciate you stopping by and talking to us. So we did an online survey, we mentioned, we talked about that a little bit before when we were here in May. We also did a market nights booth in May, after the council had adopted the urgency item. We shared some key information with people, followed up with some folks, had some really good input there, some good, good discussions with people on the street, which was kind of cool as a planner to, to do that with people. So some key takeaways, there's definitely a preference for the Spanish style in the city. People like the Spanish style. People also like the craftsman style in the city. Our City Hall is kind of a form of craftsmen, as well as our library and our buildings down here. People like those. The American Mercantile, which is kind of Main Street USA and Farmhouse, people like those, but the, the Spanish and craftsmen definitely are preferred. We did talk quite a bit with people about what they want to see with these types of projects, so I would say a lot of these people we talked to are single-family homeowners, but they have, you know, they have ideas about what multifamily should have, and there was definitely a discussion for more paths and, and bike trails and walking, and so as staff, we're continuing to push for that on projects, to make sure that we get those, those amenities. There's a preference for open space to be more centrally located, which I can say we did on the city's project on Oakview Ranch, tried to create a central core, which is one of the examples in the picture there. And then, community members, of course, want to see more trails and parks and things like that as part of projects, and we, we have put that in the objective standards, so those things are required. So the final document, what did we do to it? Well, first off, the, the way it's laid out, we have five chapters, here's a purpose which sort of introduces it. Chapter two is the general standards that apply to all projects. Chapter three is the building types, it's really three different types of building types. There's low-rise, which is essentially one to three stories, mid-rise is four to six stories, and then high-rise is above six stories. We don't anticipate having high-rise, but we need to have it in the objective standards just in case somebody were to propose a project like that. Chapter four has the six architectural styles, we talked about that quite a bit in May, and then we have a checklist for each of these scenarios, so each building type and each architectural type, we have a, a separate checklist for each one, so there's a number of them in chapter five. So some key changes, just to let the council know what we did, we talked about this in May, but in the innovation, office, and commercial zones, we wanted to remove commercial and just have it in modern, allowed in office innovation in the TOD. So we've done that, that's, that's in the, the objective standards, and the council did that as well in May. Another thing that we noticed was that there, there are some office zone areas, south and west of Jefferson, sort of around the downtown, where we could also get folks proposing a project potentially under the new state laws. So what we did there is we limited those sites to, they have to use the three downtown specific plan styles, or they can do farmhouse, so we don't get the modern there. Another one that we noticed is, and we're starting to see projects proposed around the downtown, if someone proposes a project adjacent to the downtown specific plan, we'd like them to use the three downtown specific plan styles. It creates more of a cohesive corridor, if you're going down Calmia, you don't have two different types of architecture, you're going to get the majority of the same architecture throughout the, those streets, so we specifically put that in the new updated standards, which we think makes sense. Also did some other minor tweaks to revise language consistent with the housing element, and then some standard cleanup type items. So what is the ministerial process? To explain what that is. So this is something that's coming out of our housing element. Essentially, when the state looked at what we did in the previous housing cycle, we didn't approve any housing development on any of our housing sites. So, none, none that was affordable. And so this was something that we negotiated with HCD, which the council approved in our housing element in June, which is we have to create a ministerial process for those sites. So essentially what that means is people can get a permit for that type of affordable development by right without the need to go through a public hearing or a public process. And there's, there's a number of policies that bode that out, I listed them here, but essentially, that's, that's what the, that's what we have to do. And this kind of helps us wrap up our housing element. So what, what would that look like? So someone would, a developer, and this would be an affordable developer, would do a pre-application, which is what we typically do right now, and then they would submit for the ministerial development plan, and the way that differs from our current process is there'd be no SEQA document, there'd be no public notice, there'd be no public hearing. It's a director-level decision, we'd still have other departments look at it, and departments can provide, provide conditions, for example, Public Works can provide conditions on roads, fire can provide conditions on fire requirements, things like that, but it's not going to go through a public hearing process, and it needs to obviously comply with the objective standards. And then from there, it would go to building, fire, landscaping, grading afterwards, and the projects that have SEQA might be doing a SEQA document with, with their grading permit. So which projects are those that would use this process? It would be projects that do 20% or more affordable to low-income residents in the transit-oriented development area, and also in the downtown specific plan, which that's the majority of where our housing sites are, as we talked about, I think, in the housing element. And then also, folks that are utilizing the new state law could, could utilize the ministerial development process, which is allowed pursuant to what's in state law, and that's, that's part of why we had to do the project in the first place. Other projects, the vast majority of other projects, I would say, are going to continue to use the existing development plan process. So I guess a follow-up question that we might get from the slide would be, how many projects have we processed recently that might utilize this process, and how many are in the queue? So I think council's very well aware of the two recent projects we had groundbreakings on for, for workforce housing. Both of those projects, one in the downtown and one in the TOD, the Monamos Project and the Oakview Ranch Project, could have utilized this if we had had it in place, but we didn't because HCD took so long with our housing element, but we could have utilized this for those projects. There are currently a couple more projects in the TOD that we think could utilize this process, one that just recently came in, and another one that's in process right now. So there, there will be folks that will be able to utilize it, but they are all 100% affordable projects, that's what they all are. So with that, this is a key item for our housing element. Once we complete this ordinance, we can submit for certification to HCD. Council has already approved the housing element in June, so this is the final step. Once we submit this ordinance, we, we can get our certification letter on our housing element. So with that, I'd make a recommendation to. So with that, I'd make a recommendation to introduce the ordinance with the final multi-family residential mixed-use residential objective design standards and those related code amendments that we talked about for ministerial processing. And then also find the adoption of the ordinance and the final standards are exempt from CEQA as presented. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Carl. Appreciate your presentation. I have a clarification. When you talk about the ministerial development processing, you also say that we have no public comments, we have no, we can't hear from the public at all. Do we have to adopt that aspect?
Yes, because it has to be buy right. So it's essentially, the state keeps doing this with these laws. It's not just that we did it related to the housing element sites, but these other laws here mentioned on the third bullet, these state laws, SB 6, SB 35, and AB 2011, they require a buy-right process. If, if an applicant, a developer comes to the counter with a project that meets that, that state law, we have to have a buy-right process. There's no hearing, and they, they process it through with staff at the counter, essentially. But we've created a process now here with this. And then they, they would get their approval and move on to building fire landscape and grading. So the whole key here is that we have these new objective standards, that we say, you have to build it like this. Without that, we were sort of hanging in the wind here the last few years where they could propose anything, right?
Which they have.
Right. So this is the key point, Mayor, is that we're saying, no, we, we've talked to the residents, and we worked on this the last couple of years with our, our consultants with Placeworks. Alan did a great job in Molly as well. And we've put this together to, to make sure we get the projects we want to see. That's, that's why we've set it up.
Right. I just, I appreciate you being down there, and I know that your booth was very popular. And I know you got a lot of impact, in, input, as well as I got a lot of input being there as well, listening to people talk and then, as well. But, you know, representing the people, it's always so hard to pass something that takes away their local control. And, and that's just really hard for me to stomach, these new laws, that we are losing our local control and we're losing the voice of our constituents. So.
Yeah. Unfortunately, as longstanding planners, you know, my deputy director and director would tell you the same thing. It's, this is what the state's doing. They're taking away our power as well as planners, who are telling us to get out of the room. They don't want us reviewing projects.
Oh, I'm sad to see that. I am super happy, though, with the design standards that have been put forward. I know that people will bring what is maybe not up to par if they don't realize that Marietta is going to stand for only excellence in the community. So I thank you for allowing us to push excellence forward instead of what somebody will just give us. So I appreciate your time and all this, and I know it's been a lot of time forthcoming. That just is very hard for me to stomach the latter part. But thank you for the beginning. It is a beginning. And so, anyway. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I couldn't not agree with you more. It's, it shouldn't, shouldn't be allowed, what the state is doing to cities in local control. Thank you for all the work on this. So do I, am I understanding it correctly that this is the last piece we need to get our RENA number certified, or was that previously already done?
So, yeah, Councilmember Holliday. So technically, the city council has adopted the housing element. So the housing element's adopted, we're, we're using it. HCD had a hook in their letter to us that said, you have to adopt the objective standards with these changes to allow these ministerial projects before we'll send you a certification letter. So essentially, we have to do this to get the housing element officially certified, but council's already adopted it, so we're already utilizing it.
And when do we expect that certification letter?
As soon as I can get. So the, the ordinance will need a second reading. So we'll, we'll be back with a second reading, and then we will submit to HCD as soon as it's ready. I'm already in contact with staff there. Ironically, I guess, you know, you think about how many housing elements they were processing in SCAG, they seem to have a bit more time now, so hopefully they will get to our certification quickly. But I will follow up on that right away.
And when was this housing, housing element due originally?
It was October of 2021. Essentially, when we would have submitted it to them, and then they might certify around that time.
And it's an eight-year process, right?
Correct.
And so when, when is the next one due? Is it eight years from 2021?
Yeah, yeah. So October of 2029 is when will be due. So you can imagine, you know, we, we are going to need to start working on it here soon in the next few years.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other council members' questions, I'm in open public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Right. Hold on. Closing public hearing. City Council Discussion. Seeing none. I'd like to call for, okay. Well, you guys are just quick. I like it. And thank you, Councilmember Warren and Holliday, for being quick. And everyone votes?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. And just hats off to staff again for all your hard work on getting objective standards forward so we can get some beautiful projects moving forward. So thank you. Thank you to everyone. All right. Now, it is time. Yes, it is time. All right, moving on to who gets in the hot seat next. Marietta Hills Specific Plan, City Council Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kimberly Ramirez will be presenting as she has done throughout this process.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Today's item is the fourth public hearing of the Required Elections Procedural Process. Sorry, my PowerPoint was in displaying. This is the fourth public hearing of the Required Elections Procedural Process to encompass the Marietta Hills Specific Plan into a Marietta City Council Voting District. The city noted during the noticing that if Spanish translation for this hearing is required, to please reach out to the City Clerk Department. None was received as of today. For background, the city underwent the redistricting process in 2021 and adopted ordinance number 572-22, which updated the city council's voting district boundaries to what we have today. The city is not expected to adjust voting districts until the next decennial census in 2030. But due to the annexation of the Marietta Hills Specific Plan, the city must readjust boundaries in order to encompass the new territory. State law specifies that the city council shall add the new territory to the nearest existing council district without changing the boundaries of other council districts. Following the Fair Maps Act, staff recommended the territory be absorbed into City Council District 1, as shown in Draft Map A, due to the population and location being east of the 215 freeway, which serves as a distinguishing landmark between districts. The city held a public hearing and a workshop to receive input on the proposed Draft Map A. None was received. Right here is a close-up of the annexed area that's east to the 215 freeway. The adoption of ordinance number 594-23 will update the boundaries to reflect the absorption as shown in Draft Map A. And upon approval, the city clerk will transmit the action to the Riverside County Rahishar voters so that they may finalize their maps for the November 2023 election. The city's next regular municipal election is November 5th, 2024. Staff and I are available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Kimberly. Any council member questions? Seeing none? Open public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? Close public hearing. City Council Discussion. Seeing none? I'll call for a motion in a second. Motion in a second. Thank you, Warren and Lavelle.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance number 594-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, amending section 1.21030 of the Marietta Municipal Code and adopting revised districting voting boundaries into District 1.
I think that's the last time we will be seeing that, and congratulations to John Lavelle and receiving a few coyotes and squirrels in that district.
Those are my people.
The animal lover that he is. All right, moving on to governing board announcements. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. If they'll pull my slides up, there's not a lot, but I did attend the broker's luncheon at El Patron Restaurant. Excellent job, Mr. Agajanian. It was interesting to see the interaction of all the different brokers in the room and, and how well they got along with each other. So that was, that was different. I had the opportunity to visit the Marietta Fire and Rescue Station 3, and I enjoyed dinner with the crew. I brought dinner. They ate it. It was really fun. We had a good time. I attended the Knowles Women's Society August Luncheon, and again, thank you, Mr. Agajanian, for stepping up and doing a great presentation. Those ladies are on topic, aren't they? I mean, they, they had a lot of questions. I also had the opportunity to attend, along with my other fellow colleagues, the Marietta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce New Member and Reception. And if you see, so we had some fun pictures taken with Mr. Worth, Mr. Agajanian, and some girls that I belong with, PWR. And the final attendant was, I went to the ribbon cutting for Inland Wharf Brewery. This was their second year anniversary. And what a great time we had. And what a wonderful young man that bought the business six months ago, and he's really turned it into a lovely place. So it was an honor to be there. It's always an honor to represent this city to the fullest. And again, I want to congratulate our fire department, Fire and Rescue, on their accreditation. I just think that is outstanding and wonderful, and I just couldn't be more proud. Thank you, Chief. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor DeForest. I have one update announcement. I also attended the Inland Wharf Brewery ribbon cutting. You can see me there to the far left. I had a good time with four of my colleagues, so happy to be there representing the city and happy to see business flourishing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday.
Yeah, I'm going to have to talk to Councilmember Warren about stalking me at all these events. Just kidding. It's nice that we don't have just one council member that attends a lot of these, that we have quite a few, because I attended several of those as well. The only one that she didn't mention, I think she was at as well, was the networking breakfast for the Marietta Chamber of Commerce, where I was honored to share the Marietta Minute. And, and that's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protemstone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You can review my governing body announcements on our website, but I just want to just give a comment. I attended the Cal Fire funeral of Timothy Rodriguez-in-Chief Josh Bishop, who paid the ultimate price when their helicopter had collided with another one fighting the Cabazan fire. I will tell you that Cal Fire did an exceptional memorial in honor of these two heroes. And then lastly, we are doing our second annual human pink ribbon at the amphitheater Fri, Saturday, September 30th. Last year was a really good turnout, but this year, Van Avery Prep Mesa High School will be participating, and this is to launch Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So everyone is invited. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protemstone. And I will defer my comments to the next meeting. So councilmember requests to add items to future agenda. Now is the time for councilmembers to request to add items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? All right, seeing crickets from up here. Oh, maybe not?
I, I have.
Councilmember Holliday.
I have several. I have a couple. I would like to. This process is challenging at times, I think, to be able to have a discussion and not violate the Brown Act. And so I would like to, one, have a, put on a future agenda to have a discussion of that process and see if we can create something that's more efficient for both staff and for council.
All right. Listening to councilmember Holliday's, do I have any consensus that this method needs to be changed?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I agree with councilmember Holliday. It's, it's very encompassed to, to abide by the Brown Act. And I think it's really important, especially if a council member wants to bring something forward for a discussion. It doesn't necessarily mean that staff has to give reports. So I will second him to bring that back for a discussion.
Do we have a third for consensus on this?
I will, because I would like, I would like to discuss this, because it needs to be discussed. Whether we move forward or not is another subject, but just for discussion purposes only, correct? Is that what?
Correct.
That's what I would like. Thank you.
All right, seeing consensus on that item, it'll move forward. The other item, councilmember Holliday.
The other one is, I apologize for bringing this up at the last meeting, at the end of a long meeting, and I didn't explain it very well. The discussion about exploring the pros and cons of becoming a charter city. From the research that I've done, my main focus on just exploring that is to see if the city can save millions of dollars on building some of our facilities as we move forward, like the Public Safety Training Center. I believe that's a possibility, but I would like to be able to have a forum where we can discuss as colleagues and, and get that information from staff and the experts about what can be done and are there pitfalls to that? Because I don't have all that information. I have some. But I would like to discuss that to see if we can save the city some money.
Councilmember Holliday, did you not bring this up at the last?
I did.
Okay. So you would like to bring it up again to see?
I would.
Okay.
With better explanation.
I got it. Just want some clarity, sir. All right, do I have any consensus for councilmember Holliday's?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, I, I support what councilmember Holliday wants to do. And again, knowledge is power, and for us to have this discussion, I think is important. So I will second that.
Thank you. Do I have a third? Councilmember Lavelle?
Yeah, a, a high-level pros and cons, I think, would be a decent way to start that conversation and see where it goes, but I would be also interested in that.
And I would leave it up to staff if they would like to do it as an agenda item or as a workshop.